Thank them for the water.
Indeed. Well, it should be quick. Still have a few seconds. Okay, it's Monday, October 11th, 11:00 a.m. This is the, I'm getting feedback here. This is the zoning board of adjustments and appeals meeting. Let's see. Citizens, I'll call the meeting to order. Citizen may speak on items listed on the agenda as items for individual consideration. A request to speak card should have been completed and returned to the city clerk or board secretary before the board considers the item listed under items for individual consideration. Citizen comments on items for individual consideration are limited to three minutes. Item A, receive report, hold a discussion, and take action on the July 27th, 2021 meeting minutes. Gentlemen, any comments or discussion? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to accept them.
Accepted.
And second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are accepted as is. Thank you. Okay. Public hearings. Item A. Receive report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a variance requesting to reduce the required side yard setback from five feet to one foot for a carport located on 405 East Nelson Street. Mr. Medina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. As you mentioned, this is item 3A. Here's the subject property, 405 East Nelson. The particular side yard setback in question is going to be where this carport is to the left on your screen. That's going to be to the west of the property, of the, of the house. This is a site plan that was approved by the building department. As you can see, the plan shows five-foot setbacks on either side of the building of the residence. After it was final by the building department and passed its inspections, a carport was installed on the west side of the building, which encroaches on the side yard setback, as you mentioned. The standard five-foot setback is required for houses in the residential infill area, which this house is located within. This is about one feet off, one foot off of the property line, and so the applicant's requesting that variance. Now, in order to grant a variance, this is per our zoning ordinance, the zoning board of adjustments and appeals must make findings of undue hardship existing. Note that those undue hardships are not to be, and this is again per the zoning ordinance, to be predominantly financial in nature, and the hardship cannot be self-imposed. In this situation, it's staff's recommendation for denial on this request because the hardship here is self-imposed. The, the carport was put in without a building permit, and now the applicant's seeking approval of the carport after the fact. As a recap, the property is owned, single-family, five, which requires a five-foot setback on either side, which is a total of a 10-foot building separation between all residential structures, and that's predominantly for a fire hazard, as you try to create a separation between those buildings, so fires are less likely to jump from rooftop to rooftop there. The applicant's seeking a variance to the minimum side yard setback requirement from five feet to one foot. The carport was attached to the main structure after it had been finalized by the building department. And I'm present for any questions, and so is the applicant.
Mr. Medina, what can be done to bring this into compliance, other than tearing it all down?
Sure. Aside from tearing it all down, the only way to bring it into compliance would be an approval of the variance by this body.
Mr. Earnhardt, would you like to speak to the board?
Yep, it's gonna be a little different. Technically, I'm not the applicant. I am here on behalf of the applicant and myself. I have a power attorney under the applicant. The applicant is obviously the homeowner. She purchased this property before we were finished building and wanted to add a carport. Normally, we do not add the carports. Once we have already pulled the permit, we make them do it, and we just give them our subs afterwards. We don't even do it. But in this case, we did for some reason, I'm not sure where the mix-up was, on our project manager, but obviously, this mistake took place, and it's Earnhardt built's fault, not the applicant's fault. Here, the, the, the city stating it was done afterwards, it was not, obviously not done aft, after inspection. You can't get your CO without a driveway. The driveway, it's not set, the house is not set five feet from each side. It's obviously moved to the side. That driveway is over 10 feet long, and we reissued the CO after. But some, at some point, this carport was as, added and was not in the plans by mistake, and splitting it in there. We should have never done it. They should have applied for permission afterwards, and it should have been done afterwards. But it was obviously our mistake, not the homeowner's. So, we did it. And what, where the mistake really came in, the house was moved over correctly to give it room for the driveway and the carport, but if you see behind those bushes, there was a gas meter installed, and then the driveway had to be moved over a few feet, and then the carport and everything else followed, and nobody took notice that was moved over so far. Fire safety code says that you build buildings 10 feet apart, five feet of your property line, unless you have a one-hour fire, fireproof. They have approved, in 2018, they approved heavy timber as a one-hour fireproof. That is concrete siding. It's, it's hardyback siding. It's 100% concrete, no wood. It's not, we don't use smart siding. We use a higher fire retardant, which is hardyback. Asphalt roof, roofing is also fire retardant, over one hour. So, this is a, a, less than a one, this has a one-hour fire wall, meaning it can be approved for safe, in safety. Cities like Dallas have this automatically approved. If you build one, one hour, this is not, you don't even have to apply for a variance, and it's, it's an automatic variance if you do a one-hour safety, which this carport is built to that. What's not built to that is the fence that we allow. Those are pine, that's thin, or cedar, and then, of course, we douse it with diesel. You know, that's how they stain those fence. That's your real fire hazard, but it's allowed. But this carport isn't, definitely not. So, this really put a hardship on the owner. She's paid for it, got it done. The CO was issued, obviously, after, you know, the house is moved over, you know, to say that it was, the house was centered at five feet, and then we moved it over and put the car feet, so it's not even reasonable. You know, the house was built, moved to the side, the carport was built, everything was put in there, and yes, we made the mistake of not asking for a permit. We made the mistake getting it too close without it. We had a second option. We don't, they don't count overhangs on there, so, you know, it's possible that we kind of did a metal to the side is what we looked at for one engineer, but it would just look worse, you know, and it's already fireproof, so it does meet fire safety code, and I've kind of sent that code to the city. We can do steel beams that run over and tee down into the ground to the other side. It still gives them a little overhang, but to me, it would look, wouldn't fit the flow of the house or the neighbor's house. So, the real concern here is obviously the look, but to modify it or correct it, I think, would look worse, you know. Now, it fits the flow. The neighbor's house got the, the neighboring house has got the same thing. It's only three feet from the edge. It's got a carport, which we put on a, on our C, I mean, on our plans and did it, and it was approved next door at three foot. So, it, it, there, this one's definitely closer, and we definitely didn't have permission as Earnhardt built, but that wasn't the homeowner's fault, and now she's the one that's having to suffer, and it was our mistake, and we'd just like to get a variance so she can keep her carport.
I drove there yesterday to take a look at the houses.
Yep.
The one next door also has a carport.
Yep.
But doesn't have the garden right next to the house, so you're able to move the carport closer to the house?
Yeah, so this, the gas company accidentally stuck the meter on the wrong side of the house, and that's why this one got put on the, we always have the, we have our designs, they're all the same, and we try to leave it open where they can add this carport at any point, or a garage, but the gas company messed up and put it on the wrong side of the house, of the plans, and that's where the problem started, and nobody caught on early enough, and the, the concrete guy just poured the driveway, he just moved it over, and he doesn't tell us, and so then the carport guy doesn't tell us, and he just, the framers just frame it over a little wider, and nobody alerts us, and it's just where our mistake is, not catching it.
Well, unfortunately, you know, you're right about the material, but the zoning regulation says five feet. It doesn't say what type of material you're using, it has to be five feet.
Yep.
So, it's unfortunate that the gas company placed that meter there. I didn't see it, and I'm looking at the picture now, and, yeah, right in the middle of flowers, there's a gas meter.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I guess they did it a little farther than, you know, they could have even done it closer, but they did it for safety, however, to keep the car from going there, you know, so it was just a compound in effect. But this, this application is from the homeowner, and of course, none of this is their fault. It is our fault, so it's not the hardship she brought on herself, it was one that we bought. It wasn't a custom build, it was a spec home that she just bought.
Well, if you had to remediate this, what would you do?
I would do a steel beam over and tee it down, which the homeowner said would be fine, and engineer said could support that, but then you would just have steel level beams that kind of come over and tee, and then cross over, 'cause we can't, there's not a, in the zoning where overhangs are measured under there, and that's why I like to say on the, the other house, the overhang hangs over the five feet, obviously, and that's how most buildings are built. You know, we approved Crawford and Lilis. We did a planned development, which it wasn't even big enough for a planned development, so we definitely allow these structures to be close. We did all those townhomes, which are super close next to them, and we're doing a whole neighborhood of it, you know, so it's, it's not like the city doesn't approve this type of structures this close, and this is not even the actual housing structure. We have another firewall. Here, it's 15 feet away, so the structure, the carport has to catch on fire and go all the way over there, which it's already a one-hour fireproof, you know, so the safety is not the factor here, and I wouldn't say that looks are either for allowing it other, other places, you know.
Jonathan, so, I'm sorry, Jonathan, but what you're saying is that the overhang itself would be fine if it didn't have the wood or underneath it. So, in essence, the same thing would be there, just built differently.
Yep.
And so, so there's not going to be anything really accomplished as far as, in my opinion, of making you tear this down just to get rid of the wood beams, whether already being a one-hour fire rating or above. The only thing you're talking about is the variance that says it can't be less than certain distance, but the very same roof can be there and be the very same distance to do it right now without wood.
Yeah, if you look it up, pretty much every house that's been built, especially in these infill lots, all the overhangs are over the five feet. We build to the, the body of the house, so if you look at every house, including the one very next door, that overhang is about two feet from the property line. It's two and a half feet, and that's how we do it. It's measured from the wall, so those beams are what's really making this violate.
Right, but it's just, it's, it's the overhang, and that'd be the one next door. And add, and add, oh, there it is.
Well, I, I mean, in my opinion, the look would be worse, 'cause then I'll have a steel beam when it, all these houses are built with cedar. You know, we do steel beams a lot, too, but we didn't do the rest, and also, I'm not going to go to the neighbor's house and add steel beams or, or their front porch. I'm going to bring that still kind of, an I-beam over and attach it to the house, and then shoot it into that dirt spot where the gardens are, you know, to make it just an overhang.
So, there's magic over the house, but it's not.
Yeah, and of course, it saves us money, it doesn't really save her money. It's not a financial thing on her, but, you know, it's just...
Can the gas meter be relocated?
No, they won't relocate. It goes under the driveway.
So, the gas meter is set, the, the, when you're running it, when you build the house originally, you run the gas line, what do you have, then they don't, so the gas, is what that, y'all, you're saying?
I don't know if the gas was run by the plumber first or by the, the gas company. Now, the gas company work, obviously, we build a bunch of these, and they normally have our plans where we want them every time, so sometimes they come out there and run them first, sometimes the plumber run them first, whoever schedules fast, but we always have them marked on the other side of the house, and we do the same, 'cause we do the same five plans over with different facades, and we always put the one house, and they're supposed to put it on the narrow side of the house, and we do it every time, so I don't know who made this mistake, and it's, it's, it's really odd that this, that, it would be odd that the plumbers kind of made it, because they're more familiar with our houses than the gas companies, but, you know, that, they know, it's the same design, they're in that house doing it, you know, and they really got the practice of doing it. So, they're obviously saying the gas meter was already there, and the gas company's like, well, it's where we always, or whatever excuse or they had, so, it just, I'm not sure where the mix-up got. And I, I was actually caught, when the city caught me off guard when they said, we built that, 'cause I was like, we don't add the carports, we do it beforehand, or we just sub it out to them, but we actually did do this one, and that's why it was built, and the CO was issued beforehand, 'cause we don't come after and do it, we just don't do any subcontracting work, we just send them to our subs, and that's, should have never been done.
Pardon my interruption.
Yep.
Mr. Medina brought up the, the, what, the site plan.
Yep.
Showed the driveway clearly coming up to the house in the front instead of being off to the side. So, obviously, somebody changed their mind about where to put that driveway, and it's unfortunate, but I think it violates the policy of five-foot offset.
Yeah, so, the driveway doesn't have to have a five-foot offset, and as the city said, it, that, they want you to hit those minimums, they don't care where it's placed, so you just hit those minimums, and a driveway is, is not required under that five foot. That was the fire sa, safety back, so it's the carport that's violating here.
Any more questions or discussion? All right, Mr. Earnhardt, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Medina, do you have anything to add, or, no?
No, sir.
No, I'll entertain a motion. Well, I, I have no problem with that, motion's approved. Do I have a second? No one wants a second motion?
To approve it, is what you're asking?
Well, it's the motion that's on the floor, so approve it as is. Pardon me?
Me, too.
Okay, the, all right, so that motion does not get carried. I'll entertain another motion.
I do have a question. I said it earlier, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Medina, is there anything that they can do besides tear it down? I mean, you may have already answered this question, besides tear it down, is there anything that you, that the city would have allowed, so they wouldn't have to tear it down?
Sure. At this point, there would be nothing, except for a variance by this body, like I mentioned. There was discussion of kind of looking at this more of an overhang and kind of just allowing it to exist as an overhang, but our zoning ordinance and building department, there are definitions for an overhang and a, and a carport, so this would meet the definition of a carport, which would therefore be in the side yard setbacks. I, I don't have those definitions with me, I'm sorry, but I don't think that approach would, would work in, when the building department is reviewing that. If, if these new building plans were to come in today, and they marked a carport as an overhang, they would, they would deny it or mark it up and send it back to the applicant.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, again, I'll entertain a motion. Nobody wants to make a motion?
Another question, I guess. If, if you were to, if we were to approve that, would that be setting a precedent, where everybody else may come in and do the same thing? I mean, I mean, granted, I understand that this is a mistake, but how do we tell others they can't do the same thing if we let this one go?
I think the house is, this house is uniquely away from the property, the way I understood him describing it. The other houses are not moved because they moved this particular house because of the gas line, they're, to make it available, like, as I don't know why, I don't know why the gas line is there, but it moved everything as a result of the gas, so all the other houses are not.
There's the property plan as it was submitted, and it shows the driveway coming up to the front of the house, not alongside of it. So, that, there lies the problem, when the gas company came out and put that meter in inside the house. And the owner, I want to understand, Mr. Earnhardt, the owner asked to have that carport put on after the house?
Yeah, we didn't have it in our original plan. It should have been drawn on the other side and still make this, this site plan's not real good, it's ob, obviously, a little bit earlier on when we...
I don't think it would have been approved if you had done that. Well, had that been on the plan, it would have been approved, because the house next door to it is like that.
Yeah, it would have been approved, you know, but it would have been, would have been approved not with the one foot, it would have been approved more like with the two or three foot, because we wouldn't, it wouldn't have been approved with that gas thing, so if it still happened the way it was, we would still be in failure, because that, that extension of that two feet or three feet, whatever difference it is from the neighboring one, makes it fail.
I'm, I'm looking at a photo that I took of the other house, and it's clearly in compliance.
Yep. It's actually a little bit, it's been over, I think we measured it, too, but, yeah, it, this one would have failed either way because of the gas being pushed us over, and we didn't get it.
Yeah.
So, your question was, is this setting a precedent?
Yes.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see a precedent here, because I don't see every other house all the time the other way. How does, and unless the gas company comes out and you don't catch that again, and again, and again, then, I don't see a precedent.
Mr. Medina, would you address that? Will this set a precedent, and what would do to future hearings?
Sure, so, as Mr. Earnhardt mentioned, we do adopt planned development zoning districts where the developer can come in and do more of like duplexes or townhome-type projects that are more close to one another. I don't know if that is setting a precedent as much, a precedent as much as this is. At the end of the day, this body still has the authority to say, whenever these cases come in, on a case-by-case basis, whether that precedent will be set or not. With regard to planned development zoning districts, or more of that custom zoning, that has oversight from the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for final approval. So, I think there's a couple of steps there. It's always possible, right? It's always easy to, to point to a house or a project and say, well, they got that variance, I want it, too, but at the same time, there are multiple governing bodies that look at that before it's officially approved.
We run into a similar thing like that with the preservation board, where someone comes and says, this is color I want to paint my building, and says, no, it's not an approved color, and he said, well, that building down there is the same color. Well, that happened before this board was in effect, and the rules were in effect. And what I'm concerned about, and I agree with our, my co-panelists here, that kind of sets a precedent, so if someone comes in here with a similar problem, they're going to point to this and say, well, you permitted it there.
Sir, understood.
I, I want to make another comment on it. One of the biggest things is, the reason this five-foot setback really existed, that fire, where very few people build their home to a one-hour fire wall, that is solid concrete siding we use. Most people use smart, which is wood-based, and it's not a fire. Nobody uses solid timber, especially on a carport. They use cheap timber in the middle, it's surrounded with cedar on the outside, which is not a fire rating, these are fire-rated. This, this is all cost money that a lot of the builders, especially the spec builders, don't use, so the precedent wouldn't be to allow something that's burnable. This is allowed by fire code, code if you're one hour, and we do do it in other places, so we're not asking for any fire variance, it's just whether y'all consider that code was written for appearance, too, you know, and...
So, let me, let me ask you a question. What, with heavy timber, you're correct, but, but it precludes treatments, what you can stain with? Because that, that affects the fire rating.
Yeah, so, I don't even know what it was stained with, but we do not use personally, we do not use the gasoline base, so we use the water, or there's an alternate base, just because our liability is higher for the builder. So, we use some that is supposed to be on the safer side, but I couldn't tell you that change, but I think, I can tell you that, that's a six- or an eight-inch timber, and I know it's rated way higher than one hour, and the, the fire rating, just if y'all don't know, is how long, it's not how long it takes to get on fire, it's how long it supports that structure above. Well, there's no way that structure above, those beams run over straight to the other side, I mean, that probably is an eight or 10-hour thing. You'd really have to have a test to see what that weight is above it, and you want that, if you want that structure to stand for an hour, it's that timber card on line, and I can tell you, it'll pass that, you know, I know that, 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 that beam's listed as safely to be exposed inside a apartment building, and hold second stories for hours.
So, the purpose of the rule, from what I'm hearing, is fire rating, it has nothing to do with aesthetics?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
It would also be with aesthetics, too. It would be, when, when you're looking at the zoning code, you're trying to achieve consistency and uniformity with the neighborhood. Now, we do look at fire issues and building issues to make sure that we're consistent with these other departments and, you know, aspects of building in the city as well, but there's, there's a couple of...
There's, there's multiple reasons for this.
And if we kind of try to set a precedent, one thing is, if the city approves something in there, you can go back and correct, you know, but one of Crawford and Lilis was approved as a planned development, even though it was undersigned acre, so anytime the law precedent says that, you could go back and make them tear it down if it was approved unlawfully or in there, you know, so if we set the precedents there, we can look at a lot, there's a lot of these that kind of sit around that were even approved, that shouldn't have been approved, so we're going to look at Crawford and Lilis to also be torn down, you know, that would be my, my thing, and then, and we have lots next to us, I mean, I could name quite a few, just this one, the apartment you were just being built, talked about, over there at 502 fails that mark. It's, the property faces owing, technically, they're built 10, five feet from the back, so really, that back five feet's going to have to be torn down. Their garage is less than five feet from the road, which has to be 18, so pretty much that whole duplex is going to have to be...
We may see them in here, too.
Yeah, so I sent that inquiry in now to ask.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Earnhardt. Unfortunately, we've got to abide by the rules as we have them. Our hands are tied on that. So, I would entertain another motion, if someone would like to make it. Anybody? It's right there.
I'll make a motion, I'm going to deny the variance requested.
Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Well, those opposed, the vote is three, four, and one against, the motion is carried. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
I will note, though, since we are a member short today, we do need affirmative vote of four members from the board in either direction, so...
So, what do we do now?
So, we had a failed motion of approval and a failed motion of denial. Vanchen, do we, how does that work? If the applicants, if they're requesting a... If the applicants, if they're requesting a variance, there is no affirmative either way?
I don't know. I thought that that was just for approval, so what we can do?
Life is good.
If someone's got a form of signature or something, we might just.
Then we have Parliament's hearing.
That would be my, we might just.
Well, this is a fine thing.
And, and, and maybe it is only for approval. Let me check.
It's kind of a touchy subject for me, Mr. Earnhardt, because I lived at 404 West Main when the buildings down here caught fire. And I saw how quickly that fire moved from one building to the next. Now, granted, that's, that's old structure. So, there were code violations in those buildings, but there was not much to be done about it.
Yeah, this, this one, the fire, like I said, like in the city of Dallas, it's all automatic. It's not, the fire concern is gone. It's really just the static or, you know.
Like to stress again, we, we appreciate what you've done in this town with the infills and the remodeling of places. Really do appreciate that. And I, I don't like doing this, but I feel like our hands are tied. It's, there's, the code is what it is.
Yeah, but there is also the variance for reasons. So, if you've coked what it was, we wouldn't even have a.
Mr. Medina, I'm looking at this photo that you supplied. It doesn't show the carport. It just shows the driveway.
Yes, sir. So, that was taken before the carport was added? That's a, that's the latest aerial photo that I could find on our, in our maps.
If the carport were removed, would it be in compliance then?
Yes. Yes, if it was removed. And we'll wait for Fanchan to return to see what the city clerk says about that. How I'm reading the ordinance, let's see, 28.8.4. This is, says, "The concurring vote of at least 75% of the full zoning board of adjustments and appeals is necessary to: A, reverse an order requirement, decision, or determination of an administrative official; B, decide in favor of an applicant on a matter on which the board is required to review under this chapter; C, authorize a variance for the terms of this chapter, or B, I'm sorry, or D, hear and decide special exemptions to this chapter." So, I'll share this with Fanchan when she returns to see what, how this would affect us.
To approve, to approve the variance, to authorize the variance, then we would need the 75%, so we would all have to agree. But to deny it, we have the majority that we need to deny a variance.
So, the motion does carry, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, then, the motion is carried.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Definitely want to get it right. So, the motion is carried. The appeal's been denied. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There being none, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.